On the dot. Well, Merry Christmas, everybody. I'm going to call the Thursday, December 21st, 2023 Planning Commission to order. Commissioner Celine, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, please, right at the first.
A pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present, with the exception of Commissioner Bartow, who is excused this evening.
Okay, great. Public comment time. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Public comments on non-agenda items. Seeing none, moving on. Requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are none tonight.
Okay, thank you. Consent items. Item number one, the meeting minutes of December 7th, 2023. Would anyone from the audience wish to comment on these meeting minutes? Okay, if not, would this commission like to call for a motion? Anybody? Commissioner Langford?
Sure, I'll move the minutes are approved.
Commissioner Rosin, may I share?
Oh, second.
And then, okay, call for vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, moving on. Item number two, this is the public hearing items. This is 1401 Quail Street Residence, PA 2023-004. Site location, 1401 Quail Street. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, Chair Elmore. My name is David Lee with the Planning Division. I will present the project. This is the project location, highlighted in red. It's located in the city's airport area on the corner of Quail Street and Spruce Street. As you can see, the 73 freeway and jamboree are nearby as well. I'd like to point out that it's adjacent to the Bristol Street, 1400 Bristol Street project, which was approved by the Planning Commission in the last Planning Commission meeting. The applicant is requesting to demolish an existing office building of approximately 23,000 square feet and construct 67 for-sale condominium units. The, out of the 67 units, 59 are market rate and eight are affordable. The project is proposed to be a podium-style construction. There's five levels of residential units above an on-grade parking structure. There's also one level of subterranean parking beneath, and a total of 146 parking spaces total for the project. Here are the entitlements that are requested. I'll just highlight a few of them. General Plan Amendment to change the designation from office to mixed use for the housing, and also for the Planned Community Amendment for PC 11 Newport Place to include this property in the residential overlay. And this project also has a tentative vesting tract map for condominium purposes to sell each individual unit separately. Just wanted to give a quick summary of the dwelling units. The base units that are allowed on this site are based on the conversion of the existing office building, and that allows for 52 base units. The planned community text requires 15% of the base units to be affordable, and that comes out to eight units, and that is what the applicant is providing. And the applicant is proposing a density bonus based on those, after providing the affordable units, of 27.5%, which comes out to 15 units, and there's a total of 67 units for the project. Here's a quick site plan. Just orient yourself. Spruce Street is below, and then to the right is Quail Street. There is a vehicular access on Spruce Street to the left. As you come in, there's a motor court, and there is a parking entrance at the edge of the motor court to the subterranean parking and the on-grade parking. There's landscaping that's around the project, and the project does have amenities, as you can see, with the pool deck, seating areas, and clubhouse as well. Here's a quick rendering of the motor court, and the parking entry is hidden behind that tree, but that's where it is. And Spruce Street is on the right there. Again, it's a six-level above-grade project. This is a rendering from Spruce Street. As you can see, there's a two-tone color of the building to break up the mass, and landscaping as well, to provide that nice aesthetic. Just want to note that this project site is identified as a housing opportunity site by the Certified Housing Element to accommodate the housing growth needs of the city, and does aid the city to meet the RENA requirements. So as part of the development, the density bonus project from the state law as well as the city's municipal code, the applicant is requesting development standard waivers. First, the applicant is requesting relief from park dedication requirements. The general plan, Land Use Plan, requires dedication of half-acre land for parks. The policy requires in lieu fee if the land is not feasible. In this case, the site is 1.7 acres, so a half-acre land is not feasible, and therefore the applicant is requesting to pay a reduced in lieu fee instead of dedicating the land. And since the project has condominiums, Title 19 also has parkland requirements for a 0.74 acre park, and the applicant is requesting waiver of that requirement as well. The second waiver is for street setbacks. There's a 30-foot requirement of setback from the streets. The applicant is proposing 11-foot from Spruce and 10-foot from Quail, and that is to be able to fit this project and the number of units into the lot. And finally, for building height, the requirement is 55-foot maximum, and the applicant is proposing 81 feet, and that would be able to fit the six floors above grade to accommodate all the units. Similar to the waivers, they are also allowed for, to request for two incentives or concessions based on what they're providing with the affordable units. The first incentive or concession is to modify the affordable unit mix. The municipal code requires for the same proportion of the bedroom counts for the unit mixes. As you can see, it's a 40% and 60% split between two and three bedrooms. So per the municipal code, they would need to provide that same ratio for the affordable units. However, as an incentive, they are requesting to have all of the affordable units be two bedrooms to allow for the project to be financially feasible. And the second incentive or concession, the applicant is requesting to waive a portion of the parking lieu fee, which I mentioned earlier, required by the general plan land use policy. There is a development agreement required for the project. This development agreement is a 10-year term, subject to future CPI adjustments, and I've listed the negotiated numbers on the screen. Includes a public safety fee, the reduced parking lieu fee, as I mentioned before, and a general public benefit fee. In terms of SEQA, an addendum to the 2006 General Plan EIR was prepared by Placeworks. No new environmental analysis is necessary, such as a new EIR or a mitigated negative declaration, unless certain thresholds are triggered. And in the review, the proposed project does not result in any new significant impacts or additional mitigation measures. And finally, I'd like to propose a revised condition for condition number 81, and I'll just read it. The bold part is what is changing. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall coordinate with the city to complete the required off-site improvements identified in the sewer capacity study dated October 20th, 2023, to the satisfaction of the Public Works and Utilities Directors. The applicant shall be responsible for their fair share costs of the improvements as determined by the city, which may include the payment and construction of the entire improvement, unless the city assumes the costs of the improvement. So that's for the off-site improvements for the sewer that the Planning Commission did discuss for 1400 Bristol. With that, the planning, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending approval of the project to the City Council. If approved, the next step would be to have the project reviewed by the Airport Land Use Commission, which is on their agenda for January 18th of next year. And subsequent to that, staff will bring the project to City Council for the necessary hearings. That concludes my presentation. The applicant, Intercorp, is here. They have a presentation when you're ready for it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great presentation. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Rosin, Vice Chair.
David, you've mentioned the section of off-street or off-site pipe. That's the same one we talked about last time. I think you said that. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, Vice Chair, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, Exparte Communications, I'll start down with Commissioner Rosin.
I had a communicate, a conversation with the applicant.
I spoke with the applicant's representative.
I met with the applicant.
I had a meeting with the applicant.
Had a brief telephone conversation with the applicant's consultant.
I met with applicant as well.
Right, okay. All right, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and I believe the applicant has a presentation that they would like to bring to our attention.
Good evening, Chairman Elmore and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rick Puffer. I'm Vice President of Development at Intercorp Homes, and would like to thank staff for a very thorough and well-prepared presentation tonight on the 1401 Quail project. It's been a pleasure working with the city, and we're excited about this project and bringing this forward to the city of Newport Beach. I have a brief presentation tonight, most of it, which you'll see on your screen. So in terms of the project, a little bit about Intercorp Homes first. Intercorp Homes is a privately owned, infill-based residential developer that specializes in redevelopment of infill properties across Southern California. We have offices located in three major markets, which include beyond Newport Beach, Vancouver, British Columbia, Seattle, Washington, and Austin, Texas. Some of our recent projects, which you'll see on the screen in the upper left-hand corner, is the Isle at Mariner Shores, which was 36 units of luxury townhomes. It's a very well-received project that was recently developed. It actually was contracted ourselves team there through Arbor Real Estate, and they did a great job for us. That project is located on Irvine Avenue, adjacent to 17th Street and the West Street, the West Cliff Shopping Center. Adjacent to it in the slide on the upper right is Lux, which is a townhome project located in the Irvine Business Complex. On the lower left is Mirin, which is 33 detached homes behind a gated community entry. And then finally, we have the Place, which is on the lower right, which is a detached community with rooftop decks, feasting fabulous views of coastal Orange County. This project is located in Costa Mesa. All right, so a little bit more about Intercorp Homes. Intercorp Homes is, our offices are located right here in Newport Beach, California. In fact, we're just a block south of the subject site. Our team is comprised of homebuilding professionals with a diverse array of experience in the local homebuilding market. We focus on the redevelopment of infill locations, transforming underutilized sites into thoughtfully designed residences for the local community. We have a strong passion for what we do, and we love working in the city and in Orange County. So as the next slide comes up, let me tell you a little bit here. I guess there's a, yeah, there's a small delay between the slide and my operating of them here, but our team has been hand-selected. This is our consultant team for the project. The 1401 Quail consulting team consists of local design professionals from Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, and Irvine. Each consultant has been selected based on their performance record and their prior experience on similar projects of this scale and of this style. We value their insight, and we are pleased to work with local firms who have really a long-term vested interest in the community. We love doing this together, and that's what we've done here. Each of these consultants are here today. Next slide. So a little bit briefly about the project, and this is that overview. The architecture is inspired by world-renowned architect Robert Stern. He has a project called 70 Vestry, and this project is similar in terms of its massing, the scale of the color blocking. And as you enter the site, there's a stone-clad monument wall that brings you in the private entry. That entry has enhanced paving, and as you enter, you pass by six parking stalls open for any guests, and then there's 14 additional open stalls within the parking structure for guests. At that entry, there is a clubhouse that reads towards that front area, and that provides flexible use for future homeowners to accommodate friends and gatherings within that clubhouse This front view is along Spruce, and this was well-covered by planning, but you can see the color blocking and then the expansive decks and the stepback of the penthouse suites at the sixth floor. I would add that the color blocking and the choice of London Plain Trees, which was discussed with the city, bring in a residential element and tie the living space to the pedestrian feel of that corridor as you come down Quail and Spruce Streets. This slide you see before you represents the landscaping and gives you an idea of that entry space as it relates to the project. If you look on the left side of the screen, there's an outdoor seating area underneath a canopy of palm trees and string lighting, and that carries you back to a lobby space. And then above that lobby space on the first floor of living, it's actually on the second floor, is on the podium level, a pool deck and seating area, entertainment spaces. This slide quickly represents the lower floors, floors two through five, and the centrally located balcony space to each condominium. The condominiums provide perimeter views, and those that are internal to the project provide nice views of the pool deck space. On the penthouse level, the massing steps back, as was discussed earlier. There are fewer units on the sixth floor, and the ceiling goes from the lower floors, which is at 10 feet, goes up to 12 feet on the penthouse suites. As you can see, they have wraparound rooftop decks, and the glazing that's on these units really open up the great room space to embrace the indoor-outdoor feel of that rooftop deck. Focusing back on the entry, you can see from this perspective how the indoor-outdoor space and seating area leads to the lobby, which is head-to-toe glass. The two monuments you see in front of you are where the two elevator bays go up to serve the upper floors up to the penthouse suite level. Those elevator bays read onto glass lobbies, which also provide a view and integrate that landscape area downstairs and embracing that overall space to the building. This is even more close-up view with the color blocking just kind of laid back on the building, just in wire lines, if you will, if you know how it's put together. But this really expresses that seating area and entry that ties into leading you back to lobby space. At the end of the entry and that roundabout, there's, there's actually three multi-trunk olive trees, the largest one being at that roundabout space. Thoughtful consideration was taken into account to lay out this space and really provide privacy, a sense of belonging, and a true pride for this luxury project. From this view, you can see on the second level the separate seating areas, the pool deck space, the fire table and lounge area that sits beyond and relates to the entry that is below. This view is facing west on the project. This is just an upper view of the same location. As you look east, there's a spillway coming from the spa and the pool deck towards the back of that area. So briefly here, this development opportunity has these key features. First, it provides new housing opportunities in the city of Newport, sorry, Newport Place, Planned Community. It supports the local economy with new residents that will be, that will frequent nearby restaurants and shops. It improves the aesthetics of the area with high-quality architecture. As mentioned and covered by staff, there are eight affordable residences, six of which are very low, two of which are low income rates. It provides, there's a study done within the packet, and that study reflects that there's a projected net revenue increase to the city of $127,000 annually by this project. We also contribute, as mentioned, to the improvements of the sewer line in the area. And last but not least, it provides public benefit fees for public safety, parking lieu, and general public of over $2,283,000. Our tagline at Intercorp Homes is "Building the Extraordinary," if you don't mind showing the next slide. And we look very much forward to building the extraordinary here. We believe this project will be memorable and deliver on our tagline. And so I am joined tonight by our consulting team. We're grateful for you being here tonight. Want to thank staff again and the city, and if you have any questions, we're available. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your presentation. While I have you there, do you agree with the recommended conditions?
Yes, we've read and agreed to the conditions.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? No? No? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, I'll go ahead and open it up to the audience. Does anybody from the audience wish to comment on this project? Please state your name for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the proposed resolution, I found it interesting in the project description section, one point through, that the general plan designates the block on which this and the previous project you sought your previous meeting are designated as a general office block, yet in the Planned Community, it's designated as one of the very few industrial areas that we have in Newport Beach. I don't know how that inconsistency arose and how it became all office when it was supposed to be industrial, but I found that interesting. I also had some trouble understanding its compatibility with the general plan airport policies, which begin on hundred and page 34. I noticed that the resolution skips over Policy 6.15.4, which calls for the development of cohesive residential villages. A single development is not a village by itself. And following that, it discussed the airport compatibility policies, and it, I believe, incorrectly says that this property is bisected by the 65 decibel contour. I believe that contour has been updated by the city, and it actually crosses Quail at Birch Street now, which is well to the east of this. So I believe it's wholly outside of the contour, not partially inside it. Another policy that it skips over is 6.15.10, which requires the development of a regulatory policy for each of the 10-plus acre residential villages to be developed in the airport area. The resolution does mention that this is exempted from this. It attributes that to the Planned Community text, but it's actually exempted by the fifth cycle housing element, and that policy is carried forward into the sixth cycle as policy action for 4E. And I can read you the last part of that. It says that there could be problems with the residential village concept if you allow very small developments, and it says, therefore, it is imperative that the exception to that 10-acre rule include provisions for adequate amenities, design considerations for the future integration into a larger residential village, and a requirement to ensure collaboration with future developers in the area. I didn't see any of that mentioned here. I don't know what the plan is. We're waiving the park requirement for this and the previous projects around here. I don't know what our vision is for a development of a residential village of some sort in this area. Another policy that it did mention is 61518, which calls for the sidewalks to be widened and parkways to be developed along the street to make the area walkable. And the sidewalk not only is supposed to be widened, it's supposed to be buffered from the street. I don't see any of that happening here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any other speakers?
Hello, my name is Court Ensign. I have a couple of questions that were not addressed by the planner from the city. You mentioned setbacks along Spruce, Quail, but you didn't mention the setback along the adjacent property. And can I get the, the dimensions of what the setback is?
Court, will you please address this commission, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This isn't a, this is not a Q and A, this is a public hearing.
Okay, yes.
So feel free to ask any questions you have, in your limited amount of time, and if you justify, we'll have staff respond.
Okay, great, real quickly. What is the setback to the adjacent property, which is 1451? It hasn't been addressed in the presentation by the city, and it wasn't addressed by the Intercorp people. Can somebody answer that?
If I, if I choose, or if we choose, we can have staff, we can have, we can ask them to answer those questions later.
Okay, that's fine. I'll continue. Also, I'd like to note the dimensions are within the courtyard. It appears that that, that setback is about 10 feet. It's going up 81 feet. If that's the case, I think if you're going to approve a project like this, that you should give the adjacent property reciprocal setbacks to build a similar property. And if that's the case, then you need to accommodate the fact that if you're going to put balconies on both sides, that they're going to be very closely, they're going to be very close together, and probably not a real good planning situation. So that's essentially the, the major. I noticed that there's no problem with the, the parking in the drive circle with the other property over at 1400 Bristol, but this is certainly an impairment to the 1451 property. And from a planning standpoint and from a fairness standpoint, the setback has to allow for the development on the adjacent parcel to at least be as reciprocal as this, this project that you're trying to approve. And that's my comment.
Thank you.
And I'd like if someone could reach out to me and let me know what those, those are. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none. Does the applicant have any response or any final words, or good to go? Mr. Puffer?
Yes, thank you. My apologies. The setback, what a look, but I believe it's 10 feet to that edge. The development standard being equal there, too, but I have no further comment unless there's questions that the commission would like responded to from, from our designer consultant group. So with that, I just wanted to respond. And then I wanted to also point out that our decks are within that setback, so it would be equal treatment to an adjacent property.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, any comments for the record?
Um, yeah, just in response to Mr. Mosher's comments about the resolution, so there is a correction note we would need to make to the resolution stating that the project site is located outside the updated 65 CNEL noise contours.
Okay, great. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, I'll bring it back to us for any comments, questions, and/or a motion. Commissioner Langford?
Yeah, Chair Elmore, I'm just generally excited to see that there's a critical mass of housing projects going on here. We've seen them on Quail and Spruce and Bristol, and kind of what Mr. Mosher was alluding to, it's like, hey, we can't really just have one-off projects, but it seems like this community is being built, you know, in front of our eyes, and. of our eyes and, you know, with, coming in front of us. And I like that direction, and hopefully we'll have more people to follow so it can continue to grow up. But I like this project, I'm inclined to vote for it.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, any other comments? Vice Chair Rosine?
Yeah, I really like the fact that we're bringing for-sale product.
Vice Chair, pull that down a little bit. Your mic. Yeah.
Sorry about that. I like the fact that we're bringing for-sale product to the market here. So thank you to the applicant for doing that. This is an attractive building. It's quality-looking. It's, looks great. It's going to fit in wonderfully to the community. And we already know that Intercorp is a quality builder. I feel really good about what's being proposed here. I can make the findings, and I'll be supporting this project.
Right. Any other commissioners, any other, yeah, Commissioner Lowry?
Just to echo the same comments from my fellow commissioners up here, both, that the area there seems to really be coming along, and that vision's, you know, coming along. And this product specifically, it's, aesthetics are very nice. I really like the diversity in square footage and a lot of three bedrooms, which are nice. And as Commissioner Rosine says, I do like the for-sale as well. So it brings other different opportunities there in that area. And kind of one more larger point that I know that, you know, last year when the arena numbers were coming and, you know, we were able to certify that plan, and it's coming along to where we thought our growth's going to be. And we're, I think, in a lot better shape than a lot of other cities, as you see in the news. So I'm definitely inclined to support this project as well.
Right, thank you. Any other commissioners? Do we have, does anybody want to bring forward a motion? Vice Chair Rosine?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve or recommend for approval for PA 2023-0040 at 1401 Quail.
Great. Do we have a second?
With the corrections staff would like to propose.
That clarification? Great. Do we have a second? Commissioner Langford?
I'll second.
Right, let's call for a vote. Congratulations to the applicant. Okay, moving on. Item number three, sober living by the sea zoning agreement termination, PA 2008-199, site location citywide. I'm not going to request a presentation for this specific item. I don't think it's necessary. So I'll just go ahead and continue to move on. So with that, commissioners, any questions of staff as it pertains to this application? Commissioner, Vice Chair Rosine?
So this was an interesting one for me to try to digest what's going on here, but are they offering any kind of proof of discontinued operations?
Vice Chair Rosine, so they submitted a letter to us that they're discontinuing the services there, and they're requesting the termination of their zoning agreement.
I guess the reason that I'm asking this is that unintended consequences, and I'm trying to understand if there's any benefit that we're walking away from, or are they coming back potentially and saying they can operate by right without this underlying?
I think you make a good point. They haven't stated one way or the other. Any type of residential care facility can get a permit from the state if there are six or less occupants and occupy a residential home. So if that's their intent, they haven't expressed that to us, but that definitely is a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, I'll start with Exparte Communications. Have we had any Exparte? I'll start down with Commissioner, Vice Chair Rosine?
None.
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 Great. Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Does anybody from the audience wish to speak on this item? Mosher?
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I, too, was curious why they were offering to terminate. Reading the development agreement that was in the package, it appeared that they have no further obligations to the city. In fact, the only public benefit that they initially provided was dropping a lawsuit that they had. And the current agreement seemed to give them a right to assign it to someone else if they wanted to go out of the business. So it seemed like it was valuable to them. I'm not sure why they're giving it up, other than that they're selling the properties. So if staff understands better, it would, I think, be helpful to clarify what motivated them to give up something that carried no obligation on their part and had some value to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll bring this item back to this body for a comment or question or a motion. We have a motion? Vice Chair?
If staff is comfortable with this, I think that we need to be, too. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this. I don't even know how to say this. Recommend to terminate? Would that be appropriate?
I think that's, yeah, that works. That works. Okay.
Second.
We have a second. We have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Okay, moving on. Item number four, this is the Baldwin &amp; Sons Medical Office, PA 2022-158, site location at 20 Corporate Plaza. Let me see here. Staff, I believe you, do we have a presentation? Yeah, so why don't we go ahead with their presentation?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Justin Perez. I'm with the Planning Division, and this public hearing item for your consideration is the Baldwin &amp; Sons Medical Office at 20 Corporate Plaza. The project's site is located within the larger Corporate Plaza Office Park, which is outlined in orange. Corporate Plaza encompasses approximately 48 acres and is developed with primarily professional offices. There are some medical offices on-site there. Parking is provided through the use of shared parking pools, and the site is zoned PC 17 Corporate Plaza. The project's site is developed with a professional office. The ground floor level currently serves as the headquarters for Baldwin &amp; Sons. The basement level is developed with a 28-space parking lot. While the building was constructed within the last 10 years, the building owners anticipated doing a future addition and incorporated a 28-space surplus parking lot within their design. This parking lot is currently gated off. It's private, and only employees of 20 Corporate Plaza can park down there. It's not a part of the shared parking pool. The proposed project would take this basement-level parking garage and, as shaded in blue, convert a portion of it into medical office. The project would tweak the exterior to create an entrance to the new medical office, and as shaded in red and yellow, would reconfigure and re-stripe to accommodate the new office. These parking spaces are surplus. I'd like to highlight that one more time, and then show the proposed project. Once again, shaded in blue is the approximately 5,100-square-foot medical office. Also highlighted are the two new entrances. Patrons will be able to access the new office through an exterior entrance and also through that basement-level entrance there. And the project ultimately reduces the 28 parking spaces by 12 and provides 16 parking spaces. Now, these parking spaces are no longer surplus, they're required to serve that medical office. While the project's scope is relatively straightforward, the project requires four discretionary approvals. First is a general plan amendment to increase the development intensity of the project site. Second is an amendment to the planned community text to mirror that increase in development intensity, but also to allowed medicals and allowed use for 20 Corporate Plaza. Third is a conditional use permit. The new medical office requires 20 spaces per the PC text. However, only 16 spaces can be fit on the project site, so they're requesting a waiver of four parking spaces. And lastly, the project requires a development agreement as the project adds new non-residential floor area within Newport Center. Digging a little bit more into the general plan amendment, the project's site is within an area that the general plan identifies as anomaly number 34. Anomaly 34 has a development limit of 468,880 square feet. There is some unbuilt intensity within anomaly 34 to date. However, it's not enough to accommodate the medical office as proposed, so the applicant is requesting to increase that development limit by 2,711 square feet. The project is otherwise consistent with the general plan, as medical office is already in allowed use for that general plan land use category. The city charter requires any project with a general plan amendment to be evaluated to determine whether it requires a vote of the electorate. There are certain thresholds that are set forth, and the standalone project does not exceed any of these thresholds. And the project, combined with the past 10 years of general plan amendment, also does not trigger any of these thresholds. Therefore, it's a minor amendment, and no vote of the electorate is required. The planned community amendment, the development limits within the planned community text essentially mirror the general plan, so the same increase is requested for the PC text. Also, as I mentioned, some of the sites within Corporate Plaza have medicals as an allowed use, however, 20 Corporate Plaza currently does not, and so medical will need to be added as an allowed use for this site. The conditional use permit, the PC text requires one parking space for every 250-square-feet of net floor area. The project itself is, it's not relying on the parking pool, rather, it's providing the necessary parking on-site. As I mentioned, only 16 spaces fit, so the project's deficient for spaces and requires a waiver. The applicant retained RK Engineering Group to conduct a parking study. The parking study attempted to identify the peak parking demand using observational counts as well as forecasting the parking demand for any vacancies within Corporate Plaza. And they found that during the maximum parking time, the peak parking time, only 73% of that shared parking pool is occupied, meaning there's more than enough spaces to accommodate any spillover from the project. The parking study has been reviewed by the city traffic engineer, and its methodology has been accepted. Lastly, the development agreement. The Newport Beach Municipal Code requires a development agreement when a project includes new non-residential development within Newport Center. A DA locks in an approval for a specific term, and in return, an applicant pays a public benefit fee. This project's essentially shovel-ready, so it has a relatively short term. A five-year term is proposed, and the public benefit fee will be $14 per square foot granted by the GPA for a total of almost $38,000. Staff is recommending approval of the project, and with that, staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and adopt the resolution, recommending city council approve the project. Next steps would be for this project to go in front of the city council, and it's tentatively scheduled for the January 23 city council hearing date. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. Mr. Omar Dandashi from Baldwin &amp; Sons is available from the applicant for any questions. In the spirit of brevity, he does not have a presentation to add on to staff's presentation, but he is available for questions.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. Commissioners, any questions of staff on this? Commissioner, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Elmore. Ms. Perez, thanks for the presentation. I was curious, in your staff report, you mentioned in 2015, this development transferred development rights from their original approval process. Can you elaborate a little bit more on how that process worked back then?
Good evening. Hi, Memorial Acting Divinity Director. I'll take on that question. So this project didn't actually transfer that. So that was a different property owner, the Irvine Company, that transferred some unbuilt square footage that was left in that anomaly over to a different area of Newport Center.
So not in anomaly 34, but a different anomaly nearby?
The 2015 transfer of development rights took square footage out of anomaly 34 and moved it into PC 56.
Okay.
Correct, into a different anomaly.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Great. Any other questions of staff? Okay, none. Exparte Communications, start down with Commissioner Rosine. None?
None.
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 Okay, great. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and openly public hearing. I know the applicant does not have a presentation. Would they like to say any few words, or are they content?
Good evening, Chair Elmore and commissioners. I'm Omar Dandashim, the project director. I'm happy to answer any questions. We're very happy to work with staff. We put a lot of effort into hopefully doing an enhancement that the city will be proud of. But I don't have any further presentation items. I'm very happy with what everything's been put together today.
Great. Thank you. While I have you, do you agree with the recommended conditions?
We do.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant while I have him up here? Commissioner Rose, Vice Chair Rosine?
Is there a specific user in mind for this type of?
We've had some discussions with some potential users, but we do not have anybody locked in at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. At this time, I'll go ahead and open it to the public hearing, to the audience. If you wish to make a comment, please state your name.
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher, and I have two comments on this. First, there are findings in here that the change in the planned community text is compatible with its original intent. If you look at handwritten page 82, which is an extract, it's showing the redlining to the planned community text. It appears that the original intent of Corporate Plaza was that medical uses would be restricted to just a few of the buildings. Looks like it was originally building sites 8, 9, 11, and 22. And then, over the years, somehow, Site 2 got added, Site 3, Site 17, and now Site 20. So my question would be, do you or the staff understand the logic of why it was originally laid out with medical allowed only in isolated sites, not at every building? And how is that logic, if there was any change, that now it seems like you can have a medical office anywhere? And then the second comment I would make is I don't agree with the Charter Section 423 analysis, which is on handwritten page 22. And the reason I don't agree with it, as the staff well knows, I think there is some problem with the processing of the previous amendment about the Newport Beach Tennis and Pickleball Club. The chart here is showing that it added 14,000 square feet of intensity sometime recently. Actually, you, the planning commission, recommended adding a 41-room hotel, which had not previously been in the general plan, which would actually be 41,000 square feet and would put us over the green light limit. However, in their wisdom, the city council, when they approved Resolution 2023-70 on November 14th, actually did not include the hotel in their proposed general plan amendment. I tried to ask why not, but I didn't get any response. So the only change they proposed was changing 24 tennis courts to four tennis courts and 14 pickleball courts, which I think would be a smaller change. So if what you recommended had happened, I think the impact of that approval would have been much larger than is indicated here. What the city council approved seems much smaller than that. So either way, I don't quite agree with the table that you have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll bring it back to staff. Staff, any comments for, to Mr. Mosher?
Yes, so regarding the intent of the planned community, the planned community was originally created by the developer of Corporate Plaza. I think the original intent was to allow primarily general office. Over the years, there've been a number of amendments to the planned community to allow medical offices. And so that's part of the project's scope today, is to allow, you know, a small increase in the allowance of medical office. But medical office is consistent with the overall general plan land use designation for the site. And then regarding the comment regarding 423 analysis, that prior decision by the council to allow the conversion to intensity, you know, that's a prior decision. But in terms of this project, the amendment, it doesn't trigger the 423 vote.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to this commission for discussion or a motion. Any comments, Commissioner Langford, Lowry, Vice Chair, or Secretary, Vice Chair? No? Okay, do we have a motion? Secretary here. Secretary Harris?
Make motion to approve 231710 Baldwin &amp; Sons Medical Office Building. Small comment is this seems to make a lot of sense. I think, as we all know, office on a macro is converting a lot, and having this contained where it is, and there's some other medical nearby, it makes sense to me. Thank you.
Great, we have a motion? Do we have a second? Commissioner Celine?
I'll second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations to the applicant. Moving on. Item number five, this is the Lido Marina Village Parking Management Plan, PA 2021-089. Site location is 3636 Newport Boulevard, 3418 through 3428 via Lido, 3434 and 3444 via Lido, 3400 through 3450 via Oporto, and 3421 through 3505 via Oporto. Pretty sure I got all those. Staff? Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Elmore, Planning Commission, Liz West-Morland with the Planning Division. The application tonight, the final item of the evening, is the Lido Marina Village Parking Management Project. Lido Marina Village proper is located within the area shown here in yellow. Want to point out a few things on this map. First, 3700 Newport Boulevard, which is an off-site lot that we'll be discussing a little bit more later, and that has 18 parking spaces. Lido Marina Village also includes a marina, an active marina that is parked within the parking structure onsite. And the parking structure onsite is located within the center of the property and includes 385 spaces, which is inclusive of a private alley located behind the property. The area in blue is parked within the parking structure, however, that area is not operated by DJM, the property owner. To provide a little bit of background on this project, several conditional use permits related to parking have already been approved for the site. So dating back to 2014, when the original conditional use permit was approved, that waived 416 parking spaces. This was during a time when Lido Marina Village was really revitalizing and changing into what you see today. And so at this time, they waived 416 parking spaces, and Electra Cruises was a major tenant at that time and had a large demand of 188 parking spaces approximately. And Electra Cruises was an excursion services, or a charter boat, that offered things like dinner parties, or weddings, or other large events that had a really unique demand profile, where you have a lot of people arriving to the site at the same time and needing to find parking. So that was really unique. Another thing to note is that at that time, it was really, the parking was really based on an anticipated demand of future uses because it wasn't fully built out yet. And then in 2016, as the property began to fill out with its occupants and become very popular, they did need to provide some additional off-site parking for employees. And so they located those at the Upper Star location on this map here at Hoag Health Center, and that was for employees only. Because of the distance, they did need to provide an employee shuttle. And in 2016, there was a fee related to parking for the employees onsite and off-site. However, after that became an issue, in 2018, they went in and actually revised that parking management plan. But this didn't actually change the underlying parking demand analysis that was conducted in 2014. More recently, in 2021, Electra Cruises vacated Lido Marina Village, which came with a reduction in demand of approximately 165 parking spaces. So today, the primary reason why we're here is that the applicant is requesting to remove that requirement for the off-site employee shuttle now that Electra, a large tenant, is gone. They also want to revisit the underlying parking demand based on more current conditions instead of the conditions that were more speculative back in 2014. So in order to approve the parking waiver, a conditional use permit is required. And in this case, the applicant is seeking to change the parking waiver from 416 spaces previously to 468 spaces. And in order to do that, they need to provide a parking demand analysis, which is a technical document providing support for that waiver of parking. And it essentially takes our code-required parking and compares that to the real-world experience of how people are really finding parking and able to find parking in the real world. Lastly, there's a parking management plan that's required, and that's really intended to mitigate any issues related to that reduction in parking. Additionally, the applicant is required to apply for a coastal development permit, and that's intended to evaluate any potential impacts related to the parking reduction on public access. So for the parking demand analysis that was prepared for the project, they actually went out and conducted counts within the parking structure at a peak time of the year. So this was done in 2022 in June, and that was from a Thursday to a Sunday when demand is highest at Lido Marina Village. It's also very important to note that these counts were done when the off-site shuttle was not operating. So it's a really good idea of what the parking would be like without that off-site shuttle. Additionally, they were at 97% occupancy at the time, but there were three vacant suites. So what they were required to do was to estimate the demand for those suites based on what they were expecting to put in, so retail, office, restaurant. And what we found is that the peak parking demand occurred on Friday at 1:00 PM. And at that time, about 95% of the parking spaces were utilized, but that 5% actually represented 19 surplus spaces, so it was pretty significant. And so what we've determined as staff is that there is sufficient parking without the employee shuttle operating, and the City Traffic Engineer, Brad Summers, has reviewed this document and accepted the methodology. A few things of note to understand why the demand is so different in the real world versus on paper. Things like rideshare, bike parking, which they have 60 racks onsite, boat parking, and then potential crossover from all the uses onsite, so people going to retail and then using the public access way, going to a restaurant. Those things are really not captured in our code. Additionally, of course, there was Electra leaving, which had a significant reduction in demand as well. And I also want to note that there is a lot of public street parking available. They can't use that credit towards their parking requirement, but it is available and generally convenient for the site. The applicant's also making a few changes to their parking management plan, and a few key things to highlight in that plan is that they're providing a valet assist system for their employees to help them be able to stack more employee vehicles on the upper decks that are less used of the parking structure. They're also increasing valet in general in the parking by 19 spaces. They have an existing rideshare and delivery loading zone that they use. And then, in this image here, is that off-site lot, although it's barely off-site, it's very close to the site. At 3700 Newport Boulevard will remain, and that's 18 spaces. And then lastly, of course, they're seeking to remove the off-site parking at Hoag. I do, I would like to make a few revisions to the resolution. For conditions of approval 1 and 5, I would like to make a couple of changes, and these are intended to tie the project approval to that parking demand analysis that had certain assumptions regarding the uses. And the idea here is that because this approval, potential approval, is tied to the uses that are out there and that intensity because of the counts that were done, they do need to comply with the table that was included within that parking demand analysis. I also would like to make one other change. In this case, it looks like the off-site valet parking lot 3700 actually is open from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM instead of what was written in the resolution as 7:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And there's actually 18 parking spaces available there instead of the 13. So that will be reflected in the resolution if approved. With that, I recommend approval of, the staff is recommending approval of the project, recommends that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, exempt the project from CEQA, and adopt the resolution as revised. The applicant is present tonight. They do not have a presentation but are available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Yeah, Commissioner Celine?
Does the, does Electra leaving open up any public boat docking in that area? Or is that all private docks?
Those are private docks that are operated by DJM. They may have some feedback on what uses have been using that area, but I know that some additional small-scale charter boats have gone in, things like six passengers or fewer.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Chair?
That was really comprehensive. Thank you. I appreciate it. I think, so the way that that parking analysis was handled, it's based on the fact that they're currently not operating with the off-site parking. And so, it's a real-world scenario in terms of what's actually happening out there, and it's really approving what's actually happening to date and potentially making it better with this valet and for employees, et cetera. Generally, do I have that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Commissioner, Secretary Harris?
How many spaces were they leasing at Hoag again?
They were leasing 100 spaces for employees.
If we, if the Finley or surrounding get inundated and there's problems, obviously, we can make the requirement again.
That's correct. We do have two conditions of approval that specifically allow us to make changes to the parking management plan if issues do arise.
Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Langford?
Ms. West-Morland, a couple of questions on the conditions. One is, Condition 18 talks about the maintaining three vertical public walkways. What are those?
Lido Marina Village has a public boardwalk that's located along the water that they're required to preserve for public access, and then they're also required to have vertical access ways that provide access from the street to those boardwalks, and that's what the vertical access is.
Got it. Okay, I understand. And Condition 22 speaks about special event permits. Do they have a history at this property of requesting special event permits?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions of staff? See, none. Okay, ex parte communications, I'll start down with Vice Chair Rosin. Any ex parte? None?
None.
None?
None.
None.
Okay, great. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I know the applicant does not have a presentation, but would you like to state anything for the record? The applicant, the applicant.
Chair Elmore and Commissioners, I'm Amber Wesley with DJM, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much, Liz, for the presentation. Great job. If you guys have any questions, we're just looking to reduce the requirement for off-site parking at Hoag for the employees. We haven't been using that for, since COVID, so we don't feel that it's necessary, especially since we've been able to use our parking structure and make sure that the valet services and las parking keeps everybody within that structure. So we feel that we were able to contain it to the site and don't feel that we need the off-site parking anymore.
Right, thank you. While I have you, do you agree with the recommended conditions?
Yes.
Okay, great. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Langford, down here? Any questions, applicant? Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up to the rest of the public. Please state your name for the record and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Hi, my name is Ingrid Jankowska, and I've been a resident in the Finley Track, which is right across from the Marina Park. And although we love the Marina Park, we've been impacted since day one. When, when the Marina came, they told the employees we're going to be shuttled. That never happened. The reason why they're not using Hoag is because their employees hug the parking of public parking and residence parking. Not only that, that also brings a lot of stress to our neighborhood because the employees are rushing to get to work on time, and that's been giving us a lot of harassing with that speed of what they're doing more. As it is, the Finley Track only has enough parking for a few cars because of the 132 homes, most of them are two multi-units. And with the stress of the employees coming in parking and becoming, I would say, almost a harassed part that everyone's fighting for those parking spaces, has been very stressful to live there lately, especially not, especially if you are, this is a beach coastal place, and we like to walk and enjoy our neighborhoods, but lately, it's been very difficult to enjoy the neighborhood because of the constant speed and employees trying to find parking in our neighborhood. And the reason why they are not using the lot is because if you go to the parking lot, I'm also, I'm also, I use the parking lot because I'm a, I use a Curl Fitness, and there, as you enter, it says, "No employees," first of all. Second of all, they don't use that Hoag because they do tell us, you know, "I understand that this is your neighborhood, but we don't want to pay. We don't make enough money to pay for that fee." So I understand that part is also really hard on them, and I do understand that it's public, but it's also becoming very stressful for everyone, for people living there, for people walking, for people crossing the street. It's been really hard. So consider that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher, and I had three comments. I'm not quite sure it was answered, maybe. A big motivation here is Electra Cruises leaving, and it seems likely or probable that some similar tenant would come back in the future. And I didn't quite, I think we heard some assurance that there was a safety valve for that, but I'm not quite sure where that is in here and how that would be evaluated, whether you have to go back to the old plan if a similar tenant returns. And the second comment is the current real-world situation, where we heard that it was at its peak, 95% occupied, but that wasn't really bad because there were 19 spaces left. But I would think if I was trying to find a parking place, if they were 95% occupied, it would sound like it's kind of hard to find those 19. And then the third comment was to ask as part of the real-world impact of this, what the current impact was on the Finley Track, because that was part of the original motivation for this. And I think we just heard that the impact is continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, good evening, Commissioners and City officials. My name's Scott Summers, and I live at 61036th Street in the Finley Track. Been there since 2015, and I think the original premise of having the off-site parking was designed primarily for the Finley Track, where we want to be good neighbors. I'm sure the retailers want to be good neighbors, and, you know, as that area continued to develop with the Lido House and that whole area there, it has created a lot of congestion, and it just created an ease for mainly the employees. It really wasn't anybody that was the public that we could notice, that most of the time it would be people that were going to work, and you could definitely tell the difference when people would be carrying things and wearing name tags and things of that nature. So I think even with the, the electric boats vacating, that, that you're still going to have this issue with the parking. The whole reason that this off-site parking was designed was initially, we wanted to make our area permitted like they have on Newport Island, and it got hung up with the Coastal Commission. And we actually thought that it was going to happen, and then they felt that it was going to impede the amount of beach access, even though there's no beach access from the Finley Track. But, so that's where this all originated, and we thought it was kind of a great compromise where that they could shuttle their employees back and forth and lessen the amount of impact. Well, obviously, the success of that, of that Lido area and all that, which we all enjoy ourselves, it's helped our property values and all that, but it still is a very cumbersome way to try to park in that area as it ebbs and flows, depending on the time of the day and that type thing. I think Ingrid shared with you some of the concerns when people are, you know, it's like, these streets in there are like Disneyland. I mean, they're one-way, they're two-way streets, but you got to go one way. I mean, you may have to stop, and it does cause not only a safety issue maybe for the residents or kids and things of that nature, but I think that, that we came up with a great compromise of having the off-site parking. And, you know, I'm sure at some point, we'd love to revisit permitting our neighborhood in there. It's kind of a small area, just like the Newport Island area is, but I'd like you to take into consideration that the whole start of this back in 2016 was to take the pressure off our neighborhood. And anyway, thank you very much for hearing the comments.
Thank you. And there are other speakers. Can I have the applicant come up real quick? What, a question was brought up, and it, I'm curious, what is the plan, or how are you currently utilizing the slip that the cruise, charter cruise, you do lease people?
Private lease currently, so it's all private yachts and boats that are currently leasing from us.
Okay, so individual, individual boats?
Yes.
And none of, are any of those charters?
No. We, we did allow one additional charter and, but it's a small use that only uses, I think it's six passengers at a time. So with that, that's only two parking stalls at any time. So that didn't intensify our, or reduce our parking at all.
And what's the future business plan for that slip?
We do not. We do not plan on leasing to any future charters.
Okay.
Just because we like to keep our parking to ourselves now.
Great, thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Harris, do you have a question for the applicant?
For the employees at parking at Hoag, was there a charge for them, or how did that work?
No, there is no charge for them to park at Hoag, and there is no charge for them to park in the parking structure. They are, the signs that the other people were referring to, I believe, are signs that say that the employees cannot park on the first three levels of the parking structure. They are supposed to park on levels four and five. And we have a valet service with Laz parking that handles those employee parking. When the parking lot gets too full, the next employees that come in are, are taken in by Laz to do the parking for them.
That's the 18 spots?
Yes.
And then is there a designated employee parking area on the?
The designated parking area is on floors four and five.
But it's not designated only for employees?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner.
Just to clarify, there was once a charge for employee parking, was there not? It was at the $85 I saw on the staff report?
That is correct.
So are the residents across the street, you know, that sounded like that was an issue? Is that something that is being changed in this parking management plan or something that's already been implemented?
Something that's already been implemented in the 2016, 2018 revisions to the parking management plan.
Okay.
We took away the charges for employees parking in the parking structure and then came up with the parking management plan to do the valet service on the fourth and fifth floors for employees only.
So what of the parking management plan are you anticipating enacting after tonight that hasn't already been implemented?
I don't believe there is any other new changes to the parking management plan, but I could have Laz address that if you would like. They are here, if you'd like them to come up.
Okay. I'm wondering, because it sounds like you've already implemented all that. So what we see today is kind of what we're going to get. Because I was trying to think if we, if we approve this going forward, and then it's, you know, see what we're going to see, not saying we need a, you know, an annual review of the parking or anything like that. But it's like, hey, we're, see what we're going to see. If it doesn't work out, then we can, you know, see this again in the future. But it sounds like we're, we're already seeing what we're going to get?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant, Vice Chair?
I guess that was, and thank you for that comment, because that's where I was trying to understand is we're, if I hear that we're still having these problems out there, but this is something that's been implemented. And, and why wouldn't your employees that utilize that area use this parking space, these, this facility as opposed to going over into the Finley Track? There's something about that that's disconnecting me. And is there a way that you can require them? I don't know if that's even a possibility, as opposed to parking in Finley Track?
Since we implemented this parking management plan in 2018, we have not been notified of any complaints from the Finley Track. And we have checked with city staff and confirmed that there's been no complaints to city staff about the Finley Track and our employees parking there. So this is news to us tonight and is our first hearing of this since the 2018 implementation of those parking.
Is there a way that you could monitor that in some fashion? I realize I'm throwing that kind of a curveball at you, but I'm just wondering because it seems unusual that we're seeing the same things with an as, with an existing condition. Just concerned about what's happening out there right now and doing what's right for the Finley Track.
Okay, this is Jonathan.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Maroney. I am a representative for Laz parking. I've overseen this property since 2019. The parking program we're speaking of for these employees are the, it's called the pilot program. They sign up free of charge inside of our parking office. They receive a decal and an all-day validation. I will say, we just had our Christmas Boat Parade. We were utilizing our off-site Hoag shuttle service and also during summer. The retail employees who are receiving free parking do not like this, and they tend to find parking elsewhere when we are shuttling off-site. During normal business hours, when these employees are parking, we have had no issues with them coming in. We let them in, we find spots, our valets on the roof, stack their vehicles. The only employees that would have issues would be, let me restate that, the key cardholders that pay for the parking are more or less the office that are out by 6:00 p.m. or the Nobu Restaurant employees. All other retail and restaurant are eligible for the free pilot program.
Thank you. Do you have the driver, excuse me, do you have the license plate numbers of everybody that is an employee?
Correct. Anytime an employee signs up for the pilot program, we get their contact information and vehicle information.
Great.
And there's also a decal on East windshield.
Okay.
And a sample of that is in the parking management plan inside the proposal.
The report, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Yes, please. Oh, no, no, I, I think I'm okay for now. Any other questions, Vice Chair?
Just a quick clarification. Is the pilot program mandatory, or is it something other than that?
It's not, sorry, sorry, thank you. It's not necessarily mandatory. However, it's, for the employees to park at no charge, they have to sign up for the pilot program. But it is free of charge, so I'm not sure why they wouldn't want to sign up.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. Going forward, is your relationship one with Hoag where for special events, like the Boat Parade, you can utilize those 100 spots off-site, but you don't necessarily need to lease it on an annual basis? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Yes, that is correct.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you all. Staff, any question or any comments for the record?
So, Mr. Chair, we've heard a lot from the residents. We, just a little, back up a little history. We did try to get permit parking program pre-COVID for the Finley Track residents. It was not successful at the Coastal Commission. Doesn't mean we can't try again. And I've driven through Finley Track, I've spent time down there. It's tough, it's tough. Parking there is very tough. And I think it is, there's an opportune time, now that we're talking about it, that maybe we do try again, try to come, come up with some maybe alternative plans. And I think that's worth exploring. So what we're going to do, because Jaime Murillo is our acting deputy director, he's going to talk to the residents, get their contact information. And I think that's something that we can definitely try to do, is try to do a new permit parking program in the Finley Track. I'm not going to promise success, but I think that's going to help them along the way if we can at least try again.
And was the applicant accurate in the fact that there haven't been any reports of, to the city of, from the Finley residents?
I have not, I've heard reports in the past when they were charging for parking, and since they stopped charging the employees for parking, I have not received any reports from the Finley Track residents.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I think, I think we're on the right track here. I think I speak for all of us when I say that. I'm going to bring it back to this body for a discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Lowry.
As I was looking at the conditions, maybe something that would help. Number 16 says all new amended or extended leases shall include a language, strongly encouraging participation in incentive programs, blah, blah, blah. But maybe make A, B, and then include a new A, which basically says all, all tenants have to give paperwork or at least give knowledge of this program to all employees, so at least they know it's there.
Register all.
Register their car or something like that. If you put that in this language here, at least it would require it to be unnoticed to all the tenants and then their employees. Suggestion.
Great comment. Any other comments? Commissioner Harris.
Kind of echoing that, I'm trying to think of a way that Finley can track this a little better. I know that there's not really another, I can't come up with another solution to actually enforce it besides the permit that isn't possible right now immediately. But if there was, I mean, I'd be inclined to support some sort of forced registration. If you have a car that you use to get to work, you need to register it. You know, also, I don't want to totally beat up on Lido Village. There's Lido Hotel, there's a lot of other retail uses. I guarantee there's other employees parking there, but it'd be easier to track so we could find out where they're coming from. I also wouldn't be totally opposed to a, to your review or something. I don't know, or putting, I guess it's up for review if there are enough complaints, but.
Yeah, I think we have the staff working on something right here as well.
I think the registration would be great.
Okay, any other comments or a motion?
I just wanted to point out that there is, condition 15 does require the applicant shall require each tenant employee to place a sticker and identify their, and register their car. So it is in here.
So it's in there, yeah. Okay, great. Commissioner Rosine, any other?
Yeah, I think that this, having this enforced with the sticker and then to have this staff have the opportunity to go back to the Coastal Commission, which is huge, I think that's a great idea. And I would, I would recommend that that was an actionable item. And then based on that, I think I could be comfortable making a recommendation for approval this evening.
Great. Yeah, I, I agree. I think the wheels are in motion. I think it is important for the residents, or excuse, I shouldn't say important, but I think if the residents have the opportunity now to take down those license plates, contact the city in the event of a situation, maybe now they're a little more aware that that's an outlet. They also have some assurance that the staff is going to talk to them offline and start, and start opening up dialogue to try to find alternative solutions. So I think we're, we're, we're trying to kind of find a meet in the middle here. Parking's never going to be solved down there, it's always going to be a challenge, but we'll do the best that we can with what we can. As it sits on the merits of this application, I think with those, I'm, I'm in support as well and would be willing to, willing to make a motion to, to approve this. So as the chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the parking management plan, PA 2021-089, with the modifications that we discussed. Any more clarification that we need from there? Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on. Staff and Commissioners, item number six, motion for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Item number seven, report by the community development director or request for matters which should be placed on a, placed on a future attendant item.
Chair Ilmore, Jaime Murillo, acting deputy director. I just have a few updates for the commission. Just to let you know, on the January 4th planning commission agenda, we do have one item, and it's going to be appeal of a hearing officer's decision approving a reasonable accommodation related to animal keeping in single-family residence. That's on the next agenda. Also, I just want to bring to your attention that the Dawson Varian's located at 2741 Ocean Boulevard, which was approved by the planning commission on November 9th, was appealed to the California Coastal Commission on December 11th. So they'll be considering that project. And then lastly, just to note that City Hall will be closed between Christmas and New Year's. And with that, just want to thank the commission for all your service over the past year. Wish you and your family happy holidays and look forward to working with you in the new year.
Yeah, Jaime, congrats on the new position. Anybody from the audience wish to comment on the director's report? Okay, seeing none. Item number eight, request for excused absences? Seeing none, and we are adjourned. Merry Christmas to everybody.